Good evening, everyone. It's time to start the Society Hill Public Hearing for the Grant for Professors Park. Before we get started, I just want to let everybody know we're going to be on the Roberts Rule of Order, which is when someone is speaking, please have the common courtesy not to speak over them. Tensions may get a little hot, may get a little heated. That's normally what happens at public hearings. Just be aware that everybody's voice needs to be heard. We're having this meeting because of a grant that I went after. And in February, the council okayed for me to get the grant. They okayed... Mr. Bradshaw shaking his head no. And the minister right here, and we're going to get into that. But listen, for you that don't know, I went after a grant and questioned this council about getting the matching funds, which is $12,500 for $50,000. Okay, three parks. One right here, $100,000. One over Professor's Park, $50,000. And one down at the boat lane for $65,000. Everybody knew about it on this council. We even talked about it in February. It says it in the ministry right here. In March, okay, I'm sorry, in October...
Do we do invocation or not?
Say again.
Indication?
No, no, no prayer, no prayer, nothing. This is just a public hearing. So in October, I got the grant. In November, this council voted that I send the money back because they said I did it illegally. Mr. Bradshaw, Mr. Long said that I did it illegally. Ms. Burks told me that I did things not properly more than one time, okay? Mr. Bradshaw, y'all can see him shaking his head already in total denial that he thinks that he knows everything and he does not know everything, okay? This is 2025, and I'm letting the people of Society Hill know that Dwayne Duke, the mayor of Society Hill, is going to run this town like a mayor's supposed to run it. This council's not going to run this town. This council's not going to do what they think they're going to do. They're not going to be talking like they've been talking. I'm not going to be called a tyrant. I'm not going to be called a loser. I'm not going to be called no more names in this thing. I'm not going to be called no more names on this council chair, okay? You want to call me a name? There's a place to call me a name, and it's not on this bench. And you need to have respect for the people and have respect for the oath that you took as a council member, okay? And yeah, I'm getting loud, and that's right, exactly. I'm getting loud. You know why? Because that's the way it's going to go down. Okay, so they voted, three of these. These three voted that I send the money back, that I write a letter and send the money back. Whoever gave it to me to tell them to give the money back because I didn't do it properly and I done it illegally. So tonight, you get a chance to voice your opinion, okay? Because I called for this public hearing because everything I did was legal and proper. And we're right now, three months, four months into this project, okay? And we haven't, we're still, the people are here involved. You know the good thing about it? There's an election coming up in November. And us three right here is coming up for election, okay? Your voice counts, and your vote counts more, okay? I put up with it. I said, when these two got in, I said, I can work with anybody. I've been on construction sites with 400 people. I can work with anybody. And it's been hell. And it's done. 2025, Dwayne Duke has the ball, okay? You're on defense, you're on defense, you're on defense.
Technically, you're not supposed to...
Hold on. I did not give you the floor. This is Roberts Rule of Order. If you want the floor, you say, we're going to do this in an orderly manner, Mr. Long.
That's right.
Yes, Mr. Long.
Technically, you're not supposed to, from the diocese, be talking about elections. And here you are lobbying for elections.
I'm not lobbying for nothing. I said there is an election. I'm making everybody aware that there is an election and that us three is coming up, and that's not lobbying. Mr. Long, another one that don't know what he's talking about, okay? Y'all see what I'm dealing with, people? Somebody that don't know what you're talking about. And you definitely don't know what you're talking about. So don't even look at me. So look, the public hearing is starting now. Now, give me the list so I can call off the people. Elizabeth Thomas, I believe, is first on the list. And I want to congratulate you on your election. This is our new municipal member. And also, she was a former mayor, no, maybe the other one. The former mayor, and she was on council in this town. And listen, I appreciate you. I appreciate all you're doing. And last night at that ceremony, I'm going to tell everybody here, I was there, and I was in tears because to see her up there, working, doing what she's supposed to do. Go ahead.
Well, thank you for that introduction. I guess I'll start by saying and thanking all of you that supported me and voted for me during my campaign. I really do appreciate it. And I want to say that, you know, everybody is not going to be happy with things that you do and the work that you do, too. But know that, even though it may not...
I'm sorry, turn the camera, please.
It may not be good for everybody, but I mean, I commit that whatever I do will be for the goodness of the children in Dawson County. And we ain't easy, what we born. Good evening. Honorable Dwayne Duke and the council members. First, I would like to thank you all for allowing us, myself and the constituents here, to provide input at this town hall meeting. Reiterating what you said, please allow me to finish before making any questions or comments because I may go over something that will answer whatever questions you may have.
I know you, Ms. Thomas. We know you live here and everything. I thought it might be helpful if, in the course of the hearing, since there's so many folks, we don't know faces, everyone, if you would, like we know Ms. Thomas, introduce yourselves, tell us where you live. And also, it would be interesting for us as council members to know how many children do you have that this whole situation would be of interest to.
Only the speakers. Hold on, hold on, hold on. Only the speakers, that's it, yeah. We're not going to do the whole thing, not for Tom's sake.
Just those that are speaking, that would be very helpful.
If you recall, at one of our former town council meetings, I presented council a petition, and that petition was presented in support of playground equipment to be placed at Professor's Park on Church Street. And tonight, as you can see, we got a full house, and these people are here to advocate for that grant coming into fruition. Now, I want to share with you all, first of all, those that may not remember, and I'm going to ask you if you pass this out of your mind. What I'm handing out is an article from a news and press paper. And it is dated, actually, and I'm one for lack of to have facts. It was dated November 2014. And what it does is talk about Rosemont Alumni co-standing the event. During that time, back in 2014, there was an unveiling of markers. And those are the markers that are on display at Professor's Park. They're markers for Professor James Austin, Professor Maxie Rush, and Professor Charles Constance. Now, the Dawson County School District donated that land for the creation of Professor's Park. And if y'all recall, the seat that I was sworn into last night was formerly held by Cornell Delane. He was instrumental in helping us obtain that land. I'm sure. But the Dawson County School District donated that land for the creation of Professor's Park. Now, that park honors three educators. Those educators taught at Rosenwall for many years, and they have had a lasting impact on our community. I don't know how many of you have been to the park, but there is a picnic area in the back, and there are plaques that are there that honors those who did. That said, I view tape from, I don't know if it was a work we do all have a board, and some good terms were presented that I'd like to address. One is that it was mentioned that any historic venue that honored former professors should be a place of remembrance and not playground. Well, I want to share with you all, I don't know how many of you know Cryer Park up in Foxville, Hartsfield, but Cryer Park was built on a site that was named for a principal of that particular school. That park has a picnic shelter. It has a playground. It has a restroom. And it has an outdoor stage because they have gospel in the park. They're doing something. So what better way can we remember and honor those three professors that we hold in high respect and great esteem than for the role that they played in their today in our children? So this is going to be a venue of repose that's going to be a safe haven for those very children. They worked hard to educate and try to be role models for them. So here's a place that they can go and remember their forefathers, have fun, and have a safety environment. Now, I know memorials, let me give a thing to this people, okay? Right here is Park behind eight memorials. That memorial stands for something. It's there to remember those alive.
It's actually going to be, this one's closer than the one that's going to be over here to the memorials. This memorial is closer to the park.
Well, also, memorials are a memory. There's no speculation of what they, okay? It's a memory that's been on. It's not significant. It's also in that video that I watched. It said somebody from the municipal association said, well, Society Hill's a small town. A town outside, you don't need one park. While we respect everybody's opinion, and you know everybody got an opinion just like everybody got their own, we respect that. But we are here to talk about a park for our community and our community members, not someone in Columbia, Charlotte, Charleston, anywhere else, okay? We accept recommendations, but that's what they are, recommendations. Parking was raised as an issue. Well, I am proud to announce, Rosemont Alumni. You all already know that we have acquired Rosemont Alumni. It's across the street. Okay, this is certainly not mentioned. But I also see carloads of people at the park. I didn't have to see carloads of people up here unless they had some birthday party at home. So it's not like 50 or 60 kids going to have cars lined up at the park. So I would see with that implication. It was also said that, okay, Eastman. Well, I don't know anything about Eastman, so Jack, okay? I did ask somebody, okay, look at this thing. Do you know playground equipment? Yeah, I've been there looking. Don't know Jack, but dirt and playground equipment would look like. And they were like, no, it's not going to be an issue, playground equipment. Okay, I'm going by secondhand information, just like a lot of us relay things secondhand. Let me go work on that, okay? I'm just sharing. Now, the thing that disturbed me most was a suggestion was made, okay, take the $50,000 money that was set aside for Professor's Park and let's use it to enhance this park. Okay, so that was written for Professor's Park. Beautiful park here. Want the monies that's already been allocated to be used for the park, but what's wrong with having two playgrounds? Use the monies for what it was designated for. We already have the money, so work on Professor's Park. As I close saying, we are a community of citizenship that should be dedicated to working together, piece of it. More of a good, you know? And we have to remember what we're doing our job for. It's not just about us and our opinions and what we think because if we pulled everybody in the room, everybody would have a different opinion. It's not about us, them, or they because the city will, they need to go on and do their own part. But who is they on there? It's the we being. And we need to work together collectively to look at how this park is going to benefit and have an impact on not only our children, our children's children, the legacy of those persons left behind. And because of that, Mayor and Council, I am standing for you tonight to ask you not to, based on your personal likes or dislikes, use the monies for other than what they were designated for. And I thank all of you up there for your attention and your time.
Good evening. I'm Eugenia Peterson. I represent the Children of Bethesda Baptist Church that is on Church Street. Do I have to come up there?
Yeah. You look good.
Always, but I'm all right.
Good evening. At the last meeting, two names were mentioned, Cornell Delane and Charlie Bearlow. Cornell did ask for a park to be dedicated to the professors of Rosenwall. But let's be clear. Cornell wouldn't have advocated for upgrading that park to include a place where children could use and benefit from. His main focus was the children of the community. He would never have asked for $50,000 grant to be sent back and not be used for its intended purpose. Now, Charlie Bearlow is a representative of the Municipal Association, and he does not, he does not guide what decisions are made by this council. Now, if you choose to ask him for his opinion, then the entire council should meet with him so he can have all the facts at one time to give his opinion. He should not piecemeal an opinion before every meeting we have when he is only heard from three members of the council. To the citizens of this town, please pay very close attention to who is for you and who is against your best interests. Elections are coming up in November, and elections have consequences. So I ask if we do not get a yes vote from this council for the $12,500 match tonight, I ask that this matter be placed on the February agenda so that the community can discuss fundraisers to raise the money needed ourselves in order to hold onto the grant earmarked for Church Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Eugenia. There was already $12,500 raised by this community. This is the community's responsibility. This is the town's responsibility. The mayor of this town worked for that money, that $50,000, and we going to put that pocket. Okay, next one, let us, Lamar, Lamar Baker, is that you?
That's me.
Go ahead, baby. Oh, that's for the trash? Or you got anything to say about the...
Well, that was for the town beating side of it.
Okay, okay, we'll do the town. We'll get you on the county.
But I would like to say something about the trash, if I can. About the one street in the town.
Not yet. Wait until we get to that. Francis?
I think they signed them wrong.
No, they enclose the name too. Did they sign them wrong? How about John McPhair?
Good evening. Dwayne Duke. He's old, known. I was thinking only half of a good friend of mine that have passed away. And one of his biggest, his biggest adventure was looking out for Rosenwall and for this community and this city, this town here. This whole life, like, you know, come out and go up there with your time and about working for this town here. That park, when it first opened up, I was a part of it. Early on, September, I was dedicated for the blacks and the whites that went to Rosemont School. Above of these professors that we had, the girl, different woman, Dr. Rush, that put out their light for us, for us. You give us a chance. And that park, you know, I just hope me to stay here. I'm not even part of the city for the hope me to stay here in here that has a chance to upgrade this park, that this board will take the money that they already got. Listen, y'all already got $12,000 of a bunch of pennies. This is ideal. It's almost a bunch of pennies, $12,000. They give you $50,000. This young man here, Mayor Duke, put out on a limb. I don't care if he missed out and went around different circumstances, bad drinking all, but he's got the $50,000. He's beside him. You know, and Church Street itself. Let's look at Church Street. Where's the lights at? Where the sidewalks at? What's big about Church Street? There be no living for Church Street. Huh? Now, come on now. I'm just, this is ideal of y'all giving this church street a little something. You need this for other people that go for y'all. You got people to put y'all in this position. Y'all got to have a heart and willing to give. Give them a little something. That's a little clue. Why is $12,000, that man? That's a man of beautiful fashion. That's a matter of hours. Four hour week, he'll make $12,000, doing what he doing. Easy. Easy. Now, man, come on now. Keep me out here fussing about that. Do something with Church Street. Do something for us. That's why I come here for. I'm speaking on behalf of my friends. Sergeant Major Cornell Delane.
I appreciate you, John. Joanne Duke?
I thought that was slated.
Who wants to speak? You said you want to say something? Come on up, baby. You came to, just wait till she's done.
You want me to wait?
No, no, you come on up, baby. You come on up. What's your name? Tell us where you are.
My name is Mia James Brown.
Ms. Brown, thank you.
I'm not getting a James Brown. I just want to say that. I don't live in this town here. I was raised and born here. So my grandma, my mother, my grandfather, all of my family probably had raised me. A lot of y'all be on this side here. My grandma did go master birth. She cooked at the restaurant. She took care of your children. She worked in your house. And it was really segregated when I was little. But as the younger men, fathers, you came together, something to me, y'all trying to segregate us a little bit. That's not what this side here has grown. Because whether y'all been out here or not, some of y'all bring kids, y'all kids and y'all family be on Church Street, especially sometimes, for real. And we, and black people, not only black people be down here at that park, because y'all be down there to sleep. But we see, they come traveling. They come and they stop, they take pictures. They get out, they sit down, and eat a meal. So it's going to not just benefit the town part of Society Hill because you separating the town part from the rural, more rural area. Society Hill is one place. When we talking about Society Hill, we talking about Society Hill with pride. Do you all know that Society Hill all was with the town part of the park? I know you want to mess it up when we making so much progress. Get rid of the racism for black, white, Chinese, Asian, whatever you are. We got that in your snow all the time. Under your mother and your father. So I don't understand why it's such an issue about allocating the funds that was already allocated for that. It's not the right, it's up to you on it. I'm not going to say that word. It's an American sign. We all got it, it's not, again, y'all don't be down on your street unless it was election time.
That's right. That's right. That's right.
People that come to that park, I met people from Washington. I met people that come to Canada. I met people that come here, and they stop, and I said, yeah, this wasn't the original school. And I tell them about Society Hill, and they said, it's a little district town. I said, and up in the town part, we have a little store I used to go to, it was just a pure soup place. That was the, where you get shoes from, everything. So, I mean, we always had to come uptown to get what we need to get. What is wrong with putting the money to where it goes? It's not like we asking you. They'll hold me in the water so we can juke that all night long. It's a place where the kids can come and stay on the street.
The kids.
The kids.
That's right.
Come and stay on the street. It's a place where you don't have to worry about nobody hopefully grinding down, shooting at your child. You bring your child in a park where it's safe there. It's a safe environment. Have the police. And I just go up and down Union Street. Have me put up Church Street too. And let me just go down Church Lane Street. Have me go down Olive Street. Society Hill is one place. It was great we gang law here. We don't have gang law anymore. So we got to try to bring some other things to bring people in. Make people want to come to Society Hill. They want to go, like, I got some dead town. They been inside here. I have some church members living up here now. And they talk about, y'all don't have anything else. Yes, we do. I said, we got two, three stores. We got, we got signal light, we got...
Dollar General Market.
We don't have a truck stop because the truck stop was a big thing for us. But just think about it. Don't think about your own personal reasons. Think about, like I said, a church. We not going to be here, I said, this is temporary. If you know anything about God, this is a temporary life.
That's part of the reason. That's part of the problem right there. Number two, anything I do, these two don't want it to happen.
What God has for us is for us.
I love you, thank you. All right, Mr. Deborah Hell. Mr. Deborah Hell, try and hurry. When these two got in, our hill go loose in this town. I want to let y'all know, for two years before they got in here, all right, keep it down. Listen, for two years before they got in here, this town was going good. These two got elected in 2024, and we have not had a good year. But guess what? It's 2025, and things are going to change right here. I promise you that. Go ahead, Mr. Deborah.
Hello, everybody. I am so grateful.
Thank you, Lord.
And I am so happy that my people are here for Society Hill. So, it is a part of Society Hill. Now, he's, like he said, I'm not going to call him anything. But I put on these things because I might show y'all don't know the people up. But when I was on council, they fought me tooth and nail. I fought for Church Street. I fought for Church Street to have better sidewalks. I fought for Church Street for that water rescue grant to...
Stormwater, that's right.
For some water drain. I fought for Church Street to have better lighting. Every year, the mayor ask us, what is our business for Society Hill? What do you want to see happening in Society Hill? What changes you want to make in Society Hill? Those were the changes that I had in my business. Better streets, better highways, paved roads. Give us some light. Give us some landscaping. Do something with Church Street.
Drainage.
The drainage, yeah. I've been fighting for these seven years. Yeah, seven years for Church Street.
We going to get it, I promise.
And they've been fighting me along the way. But like you said, what is for God has for us is for us. And I'm glad y'all came out to fight with me. My father has a stone or a pillar in that park. We had stopped educators. They taught. They trained us. They cultivated us to be citizens, productive citizens here in Society Hill. We've had people to go on further, up to the captain's, from Society Hill.
Washington, DC.
Washington, DC, that's right. I've been there too, with the mayor. Fighting for some money for Society Hill. Yes, I did. And I'm glad that you all came out. But it is ludicrous to even say the word resend number eight to even say the word rescind the parade or send it back. That's stupid. Who said one didn't have? That's already allocated for Church Street and spending on here. Y'all already got your grant. You got your grant for the library. You got your grant for the depot. So why we can't get our grant for? For personal reasons, 'cause you can't got left out of signing on that dotted line?
No, ma'am, 'cause they don't like me, period. 'Cause they don't like me. This one here was gold. Listen to me, everybody, and I'm gonna, and you can, you can.
And I'm gonna say, I'm gonna, you know.
Okay, try on, 'cause I got two minutes.
We, we gonna get this track. It, it's in the bag. Whether y'all come down there or not, 'cause I don't see y'all down there. And as far as supporting the community, when we had our community services at Bethesda Baptist Church back there in December, those three people worked in attendance. But a lot of you all were black and white. If it was a community service in support of the community, that means everybody in society here. Did you see that three? No.
You don't see them anywhere.
You don't see them on Church Street.
The legislative meeting, embarrassment. The town sponsors, the legislative meeting, when all, the whole county and everybody went, they didn't even show up.
Show up.
Respectable. Now, you three, right there. And I don't care if you don't have the right to come.
Yes, you all had a agenda. We knew what's going on. But I tell you what, it's not gonna follow, follow you.
That's right.
We gonna stop it in its track because election is coming. Don't come on Church Street asking for our votes.
Okay, so look, so I had a meeting with the lawyer. I had a meeting with the lawyer. The lawyer, I give him the paperwork, this one right here, February. He read the minutes, where it talks about how Mr. Long went down and looked at the, um, Mr. Long was down there at the park, and then the next thing it says is that, um, the council, the mayor asked about the grants, the twenty percent, the ten percent, and the grant was properly, uh, the grant by Ms. Birch was made a motion by Ms. Birch to accept twenty percent part and fifty percent CGB grant, and a proper second by Mr. Bradshaw, all voted in favor of the grants. That was in February. In March, and you read what happened right here. The minutes of February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting was presented and approved. Mayor Duke made a motion to accept the minutes with a proper second by Ms. Douglas, and there was a decision on thirty minutes not being set, the decision on the minutes not being sent to council at the time of the man. Always a crybaby thing there. Clerk stated that she would provide council with minutes early from now on. Three council members, Duke, Birch, and Douglas, voted in favor of approving the minutes, and two opposed, Bradshaw, Long, due to the timeframe, minutes were received before meeting. Really? Really? Minutes were approved. Okay, so this is what the lawyer said, y'all. He said, there was a properly, and this is not coming from, I don't owe ya, I give it to Mr., uh, Erwin, and he brought it to, uh, a government lawyer that told him, it was properly done, Ms. Birch. It was not illegal, Mr. Long. I ain't going nowhere, Bradshaw. Yes, you do, because you showed us laughing, smiling just now. You look like that jaw out of the face of a bitch. Yes, exactly, you too. Yeah, so anyhow, the mayor of the, the lawyer said, it was properly done in February. We approved the minutes in March. Write the check.
Amen.
I can leave you both. The park, the playground is going in at Professor's Park, like it or not. Y'all need to join me, so if y'all wanna stay and listen to more, some more of this meeting, it's gonna be very interesting. You can stay. If not.
I have one question to get to for them.
A question?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to know from whoever you said, it is the three of the church and council people. Uh, other than you, they're, they were saying you didn't handle it the proper way. Um, what other, um, issues you have with the grant coming to the park, you know?
Oh, he had a big list. He had a list, like, there was no parking, there was all kinds of stuff, and. Don't fly. It did not fly. So it's all legal. Everything's good. We are getting the money.
Thank you, Lord.
Okay? So this meeting is adjourned. The public hearing is adjourned. If you, if you wanna leave, you can leave. If you don't, if you wanna stay for the regular conference. Thank you, everybody. You don't have to like that. I know you don't. You step in, you, you got, you got, you put yourself right there.
Have a blessing, Mike.